Hi, everybody. Welcome to our public work session. We finally made it to the end of the year. It's been a long year. We have so much on the agenda, so we're going to get right to it. So tonight's a public work session. There isn't any opportunities for visitors, so we would not be taking live questions. Anything that you've got and that we could work into conversation, we're going to make sure we cover tonight as well. So we're going to start with our public work session. We're just going to add a quick update in here. Robert, if you wouldn't mind telling us about where we are with our bidding process for Bus Company?
Sure. We opened a request for proposals yesterday. We had a bidder. We were hoping to get a few more, but we had one bidder, which was Guardian Bus Company. Their proposal came in approximately 5% higher than we would have been paying Baumann for next year. So we did see an increase based on the bid, which is one of the things we were concerned about. So at this point, we have three options. One is to award the request for proposals to Guardian. A second would be to go out and rebid to try to get more contractors bidding, which I don't think would happen, considering we did have a number of the large contractors involved with this RFP process, and they declined to bid. Or if we get an assignment of the Baumann bus contracts through the legal process with Baumann going out of business. I was expecting to hear about an assignment a while ago, and I have not heard anything from either the attorneys or Baumann regarding that assignment. So I have less and less faith that anything like that is going to happen. So my recommendation at this point would be to award the request for proposals to Guardian. I've gone through their proposal. It is complete. They do meet all of the requirements that we put into the proposal. The scoring of the proposal. I was the only one that has done a scoring so far, and they do meet the requirements necessary to be awarded the bid. We actually were hoping to have more contractors, and we're thinking we're going to have to put a little bit more review into it, which is why it's not on the agenda tonight for an action item because of the quick turnaround from yesterday to today. But at this point, that would be my recommendation. So we don't have any actions to take tonight, but my recommendation going forward is going to be to award the RFP to Guardian for next year.
Robert, if we were to get an assignment, does that mean that we'd be guaranteed the same price as last year?
Not guaranteed the same price. Same price plus the CPI increase, which is 1.4%. So that's what the contract would have increased.
If we were with Baumann or Baumann?
If we were with Baumann or with a contractor that was assigned to us from Baumann.
Robert, could you share those scoring sheets with the board as well so that we can take a look through everything that you received?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then let's look through your future item for action. In which direction we go? Questions? Liz?
Yeah, I have one more question. Robert, what does this commit us to in terms of, what if school looks very different next year?
That was all included in the request for proposals, so we wouldn't be in a situation that we have this year. So truly based on the level of service provided, and the contract is a day-to-day price. So any day that we don't have service, we don't pay for that. If we need some service, if we need buses for some schools, not other schools, again, we're going to pay for the buses that we use based on how often the buses... They're billed on a daily basis, but we have two-hour buses, two-and-a-half-hour buses, four-hour buses, five-hour buses. So we can change those as necessary, depending on what the school year looks like.
Okay, and just lastly, when does the bid expire? When do we have until to accept it?
It usually does... I have to double-check. I'm not sure there is an expiration date. It would typically be 30 or 60 days, but I will verify that for you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for the update. I know that was just fresh off the press information. It was good for us to see where we're at. Thank you for sharing it. I'm going to give a quick update as well on our Rockville Center Athletic Advisory Committee. So we had created this committee earlier this year, and I would like to say thank you to Carol Rosseto, our athletic director, and all of those who were on our committee. I know Susan McNulty was our other board member on there. We had four coaches, four community members, Mr. Murphy, Mrs. McGinn, and one of our two Booster Club presidents. And I have to say, I'm really pleased with the work of this committee. Really had come together and collaborated really well on some revisions to the existing policy that we had put forward, which was for tutoring, music, and coaching processes for whether it be that teachers would not be tutoring students that they had or coaches would not be outside coaching for athletes that they were going to have on their team. We really dissected, especially the athletic portion of that. And again, thank you so much to the committee. We did such great work together, and I hope that you'll all stay on with us as we go forward. So where we're at with that right now is that we're going to be having our reorganization meeting July 1st, and I'm going to ask for it to be a public work session as well so we can get those policies out there in the rotation. So they were all shared with the administrators, with the board members, and our new board member today, and then get them some time to digest that. We'll also be giving it a pass over to our lawyers so that they make sure that it's worded in a way that is correct for us and good policy writing requires that. So we'll take a pass over to our lawyers, and you can look for those policies to be put out starting July 1st. So again, thank you, everybody on the committee. We really appreciate it. And Mr. Murphy is here, and thank you to you as well. Since we have him, we are going to then go on to the high school graduation ceremony. So welcome, Mr. Murphy. And you're muted, just as a reminder. Come on on.
I someday I will not forget. So, thank you. So, an update on graduation. As the community just was privy to in the last 24 hours, these plans have been fluid. So we are on, scheduled, and getting ready to go for our commencement exercise at Nassau Coliseum on Friday, the 26th, at 12:00 noon. I should really say ceremonies because it's a day-long event that will start at Nassau Coliseum at 12 o'clock, carry over into a car parade at 3 o'clock, and then resolve in a TV tribute that evening. It'll be either 5 or 6 o'clock where the airtime we will announce. But the thing that is most pressing now is the Nassau Coliseum. As the community and everyone else found out at the same time that we did at 11 o'clock yesterday, it was announced that the Nassau Coliseum is closing its doors indefinitely as a result of the owner walking away from the lease, which needless to say, put our plans in a level of uncertainty yet again. But we... Special thanks to the Village Mayor's Office, Dr. Johnson, the Nassau County Executive, Laura Kern's office, as well as the Coliseum staff for working throughout the rest of the day to bring a closure. The bottom line is, they are closing, but their employees are on staff until June 30th. The Coliseum is open and available to us, and they will honor our contract. The staff is meeting with us tomorrow morning. I will be there throughout the morning until around 11:30, when I'll be coming back to the high school for senior awards. But our staff, the production crew, the outside production crew, as well as the Coliseum staff, will continue working to bring some finality and closure to our arrangements to give you a simplified version of the scope and sequence, which will, again, we will go out in a Friday update to senior parents. Cars will enter from the Hempstead Avenue entrance to the Coliseum, starting at 10:45. Cars will enter and be directed to a parking space in the order in which they arrive. As cars arrive, they will be given a color-coded index card in groups of 50. So each of the six groups will receive a color-coded card. That is a card that will be used later in the proceeding, in the procession, to give out diplomas. There'll be a center staging area, a Jumbotron screen so that everyone can see, and an FM radio station that you'll be asked to tune into for the audio portion. Introductions of staff, the National Anthem, which has been recorded by the chamber singers, and introductions from the president. Speeches will be limited and restricted to almost exclusively students. We have streamlined the amount of talking that's being done, including myself. And I've been talking to Dr. Johnson about that extensively to focus primarily on the students. And that will be, we have recorded student speeches, but we have every intentions of making those live. The recordings are a contingency plan. We're prepared for all eventualities. A large line share of the time will be spent in the distribution of the diplomas, which is what we're spending most of our time tomorrow, where students will come up in groups of 50, proceed up, and as normal as possible, will receive their diploma as they normally would in a processional with the dais, with a limited number of staff, which, again, we're going to be restricted to. And that's where we're talking through with the Coliseum staff, with our staff, to see. It would be great if we could get Mom and Dad up there as well. The reason for the 50 is so that we do it in sequence so that there's no more than that allowable group up in the car at one stage. The reason I picked 50 was in the event that we do have the latitude of affording to see Mom and Dad up there with them. That would be great. The third option is to have staging areas on the periphery of the parking area so that we can have three and four different diploma staging areas, and we could move to the kids rather than then having to proceed all the way up to the front for proximity. But no matter what, students will be receiving out of the cars, receiving their diplomas live, and have a chance to throw their caps in the air as a group in a once-in-a-lifetime photo op. That's the simplified version of the ceremony. We right now plan it to be an hour and 15 minutes long to be leaving Nassau Coliseum between 1:15 and 1:30. The car parade will start to gather on the northwest corner of Long Beach Road and Sunrise Highway. Police will help us in lining up cars. First one there, first one out. Parade will start at promptly 3 o'clock with other community members, fire department, police department, and assistance. Left on Long Beach Road, down Long Beach Road, right on Shepherd. Shepherd, we're trying to reserve for the staff the last thing that the students will see as they go through the procession is a phalanx of staff members to the colonnade. I will meet them there, say goodbye, at least temporarily, and they will be on their way to Princeton and home.
I don't want to interrupt you, John, but we have, I believe, 60 staff members who have said they would like to come. Correct?
And that's before, which we are going to start blanketing the community, starting with the elementary schools, the middle schools, the PTAs, our app, and the village to advertise to the community to make sure that these students go out in style. And the love and the support that I've been enveloped by as we've been making these plans are shared, and they get a physical manifestation of that through the community's support and love. We envision the parade to take approximately an hour and a half to two hours, at which time everyone goes home. And through both YouTube and the school channel, we will air the TV tribute created in large part by Ms. Schumacher with the assistance of her technical production staff, with the assistance of Mr. Lecter.
Who is a member of our staff? Not that people know that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lecter, who runs our TV studio with Mr. Star.
Right.
Dr. Jay, anything you want to add?
No, look, I... Everything that we've been trying to do is to celebrate the work that these kids have put in over the last 13 years. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to mark the day with an event that they will remember forever and that it is respectful of all that they have done, inclusive of all the families, and replicates what we would normally try to do in an otherwise different type of setting. So I think John has pretty much done all of that, and I really want to thank him and the members of his administration for the amount of time and effort that they've put into it. And we have a very good consultant who's been working with John and with us in getting this thing done, who's really been instrumental and very helpful in working with us in the Coliseum. No one was more shocked than, I think, than we were yesterday. But thank God, we got in under the wire. The 26th obviously comes in before the 30th. It will be open until the end of this month. So we may be the very last event that is scheduled for the Coliseum. So thank goodness, we made it. So here we are. John, thank you very much. You did a great job.
You're welcome. Well, we're not out of the woods yet, but...
I understand, right. There's a meeting tomorrow, by the way, and that's why you don't have all of the details exactly correct. Right?
Yep, and you know, let's go glass half-full for a second. And we were fortuitous in that we chose the 26th. It is the first day that the governor relaxed the graduation requirement so that we are able to get the kids up in groups of 50, which wasn't available before then. It was just under... So a lot of this was fortuitous. This might be the first and last high school graduation that the Coliseum will ever do. So there's a lot of things that, as much as there have been consternation and changes, there's been a lot of things that have fallen in our favor as well.
John, are you bringing in Grandstand? A lot of people have asked that.
No, the EW Association is providing one for us. There'll be a staging area in the front.
Okay, all right.
So if you could picture the Jumbotron screen, and then there's like a concrete, like 20, 30 feet concrete walkway, that's where that will be. And the Coliseum has one as well. It's whichever one is more cost-effective is the one that we're going to go with, as well as meets our needs. Not that I'm being... And I don't want to be too patronizing, but there's a lot of people who have been more than a little patient. So you know, central administration, the board, has been more than patient with me. But the mayor's office, through Kathy Backsley, has been extraordinary in terms of getting people to pick up the phone, getting information back and forth. So thanks to the community for helping us with this.
Thinking of the community, I know everybody wants to celebrate the graduates. So just to be clear, the Nassau Coliseum event is only open to graduates and families in their cars. And the community, if they'd like to be involved, would be involved in the parade. So we don't want people showing up at the Coliseum hoping to get a nice view of what's happening. And I know it's going to be really special, and you put a lot of time. But we just want to be clear, the community can participate in the parade following.
That is correct. We only have the parking spaces for the graduates. And out of fairness and sense of courtesy, just keep in mind that if there were other cars added, that means that other graduates are that much further away. So we are trying to create, for lack of a better word, as intimate an event for them as humanly possible.
But keep in mind, though, getting to the point that you were just raising, the opportunity for other relatives and friends to participate or attend is going to be... We are trying to have that taken care of with the parade at 3 o'clock. So in other words, it's not that they've been left out of the equation altogether. It's that they can't come to the Coliseum. So is there another way in which they can celebrate with their grandchildren, their friends, their neighbors, their cousins? And there is, and that is that the parade that we're going to have on Long Beach Road.
And I don't want to speak out of turn or be premature. I've been very careful, erring on the side of caution. Part of a line... A large part of the talks tomorrow is to ensure and guarantee that we could also livestream the event. So I'm reasonably certain, otherwise I wouldn't say it, that we will have the opportunity to livestream it both on YouTube and the school channel at the same time, which, again, will open up the opportunity for the people to see and the viewing of the TV show. I know people are already scheduling viewing, socially-distanced viewing parties for that, too. So there'll be multiple opportunities to celebrate these students.
John, are you limiting the number of family?
Yes, it's one car per family.
I mean, yeah, opportunities. Is it a car? Is it a truck? Is it an RV? I've heard all these things going around.
Okay, it's one...
Bring him to graduation.
It's one passenger car per... You know, it's one passenger car per person. Now, the parking is such that, you know, if I park behind a Yukon, I should still have reasonable access. You know, can you bring a bus? Please don't.
I've heard it.
I know, I know.
A lot of people are going to convertible, but other people are saying, "Well, I could bring Grandma and Grandpa and Aunt and Uncle and all that, fit them in my whatever."
I... Okay, and just think, if you're sitting in a six-seater, what are they seeing? Because they really can't get out of the car even until the processional.
Until the possession.
So...
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm glad you let us know that, John, because at the end of the day, what we may end up doing is if anybody does show up in those things, they have to understand they're going to be back in the bleachers. In other words, they're...
They'll mess up your color-coding card system.
Yeah, I know that, right. What we don't want to see is a very, very large vehicle show up and sit up in the front. We've been talking about that as well so that there's a line of vision that everybody will have to see what's going on, not just the video screen, but also on the platform from which some of the kids will be speaking.
John, you had an impossible task getting this going, so we have to say thank you to you for everything you've done on behalf of all of us. Your staff is fantastic as well. Thank you. I can't imagine the impossible things that have been thrown at you. You've had to go back and forth. It's had to be fluid. Literally up until the last minute. We didn't need the Coliseum scare yesterday at all. I'm sure you didn't... Can't get back the gray hair you grew yesterday. Really happy it's working out and so happy for these kids that they're going to have such a special send-off. I love that it's all day, and I love that we can participate as community members and line the streets of Rockville Center again, safely and socially-distanced, but we'll do it, and people will come out and celebrate. So thank you so much for everything.
You're welcome.
Can we ask while you're here? Last time you were here, we asked about the prom and plans. Can you just share if there's been any more conversation about that?
No, we've been talking with the PTA, who are going to sponsor a prom event, a senior party. I don't even know if they're calling it in the first week in August. I don't have the date, but it will occur. My understanding is that they're still looking at the Carlton as their venue.
When was the last time you spoke with the PTA?
A week ago, a week and a half ago.
All right, there are some people with reservations in the community, but that will be addressed. And you'll give the PTA the money that was raised at the junior carnival last year for the senior class?
That is correct. Yep, and that's the way the money's being transferred.
And is there a provision in there that if that event doesn't happen, that money then will go back to the students themselves that collected it?
I think that would be the only fair contingency plan.
No, but it has to be stipulated because that money can't go... You know, as far as my understanding, a fundraiser for them is just for them.
That's correct.
You know, I think all those have to be ironed out so that if this happens or this doesn't happen, that money has to be returned to the students that raised it.
Okay. I think we need accountants to chime in on that, but as well as a contract. But yes, I agree. It's the class of 2020's money. It can go no place else other than to them.
Right.
I think the last time we spoke, we talked about running it past the lawyers, and it wasn't a matter of not giving it to them. It was just a matter of how to do it in the safest and most correct manner. So there's no question mark that that money belongs to the students and that will be returned to them. We just have to get guidance on how. Does any other board members have questions about graduation or anything to do with the senior class?
No, just to echo your thank you to Mr. Murphy and his staff and for everyone involved. So thank you so much.
Same thing. Just thank you so much for all of your hard work. We know what this undertaking was, and we really appreciate everyone that helped and supported with it because we know it has not been easy. So thank you.
And while I hate to repeat it, yes, thank you. Just, we know it's worth repeating.
Thanks.
So we just also want to say congratulations one more time to our fifth graders and our eighth graders who already did get to celebrate through their parades. I was able to be at a few of those, and the students were really excited. I heard a lot of principals say they don't know how they'll ever go back to an auditorium graduation again. It was so exciting. It was beautiful days and a lot of decorated cars and fanfare. And I think the kids felt very special. So thank you to all the principals who put together the fifth grade and eighth grade ceremonies as well. And congratulations to all of those graduates, too. So we're so proud of all of you. We're happy to keep you. So we are going to now focus our attention on the high school students and send them off before they move on to the world. So again, thank you, Mr. Murphy and his staff, all the teachers, everybody involved. Thank you so much. We're going to get an update on summer programs. Dr. Johnson?
Yes. Just let me go back a few weeks to the, again, what the governor did. And we've been, as rapidly as we can, trying to respond to what the governor actually put in place for schools this summer. He essentially said that even though there was some limited operation for summer camps, schools could only actually work remotely. So under no circumstances were we able to put together anything. If you recall, the last time we got together, we had talked about the possibility of transforming what we were doing from a summer school program to a summer camp. We can't do that. Anything that's actually running on a school property must be run remotely. So except for certain circumstances surrounding some special education programs for some special education students. So Noreen Leahy has been working night and day on putting this thing together. She and a number of people in the school district literally had to put together at least half a dozen different plans. And what she's going to try to do tonight is just kind of summarize all of the different options that we have and then spend a few moments also describing what we're going to do with special education.
Uh-oh.
You're muted, Noreen.
It's been a very ever-changing situation, as Dr. Johnson suggested. We've been fine. It's... We've risen to the challenge. So we have made some wonderful plans for some great summer fun, some remediation for students that need it, and then to provide some special education services so needed by some of our students. So basically, as far as the programming went, you know, we had the live program completely set up. We had some 500 students-plus registered for our K-8 enrichment alone, another 100 or so for pre-K. In late May, the governor said, "Nope, all school-related programs have to be run remotely." So we switched all of those programs over to remote functioning. The summer program principal, Keith Eckert, and the high school coordinator, Kristi Tersey, pre-K program coordinator, Chris Sappia, have done just a tremendous job in pulling that all together. We have... We'll be offering all of the programs that we normally offer for the children remediation, except the pre-K program. However, we did add a course called kindergarten readiness However, we did add a course called kindergarten readiness to our enrichment program. So we sort of merged them, I guess. To give an opportunity for the little ones that'll be joining us in September to get a little taste of of what a school day might be like. So our summer enrichment program has is a little bit different this year. It has a combination of an academic skill review bolstering. On Mondays and Wednesday, those classes include. K to eight ELA and math reviews. They also, we're also offering a reading center for struggling readers that are working specifically on some of the reading remediation programs. With one of our reading specialists. And we are also offering a social emotional learning class, you know, on the academic side, but a class that really concentrates on. Resiliency and understanding the parent situation, friendships. And then just the transition back to school. And that's going to be taught by our elementary school councilor, Ms. Kabat. We have 20 enrichment classes remotely offered and they will be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that's a total of a possible six classes children can be enrolled in. It's kind of à la carte this year. You can enroll in one, you can enroll in six. Registration opened on Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. And then the first couple of days, we filled 275 of those seats. About 40 entering kindergarteners are taking the kindergarten readiness class. We have a good representation in the academic class. But for the most part, the bulk of the seats are taken up in the enrichment classes. So we're really excited to be able to offer that to the students. We are also scheduled not as many students as usual. Regents exams, but the students that need to have remediation for their courses they failed. Either in middle school or high school have all been in the process of being registered by their school counselors. It should be wrapped up also by the end of the week. So that program is scheduled to begin on July 6. The summer enrichment program starts July 20th and runs for 20 days to August 20. A high school remediation program and the middle school remediation program runs July 6 to August 6. Both of those programs, I should add, the teachers are being trained in kind of the and the Zoom features that allow. You know, whiteboard presentations. Group. The students put together in groups and breakout sessions. There will be more of a. There will be an expectation of a direct interaction with the teacher for the first 45 minutes of that remediation class. Followed by a period of independent practice guided practice where the teacher will be there to answer questions will break out to small groups. So the teachers are going to do some training to learn that technology if they don't already know it. The students will be expected to go to go to those classes for 20 days to then recoup the credit for the year. I had mentioned the bridge program the last time. That's a program for students with disabilities entering sixth, seventh, third grade. We have a good enrollment in those courses and confirmation that will have about 12 students in each of those classes that will be attending that program remotely. And then finally, the last program that we are setting up is a high school program. We're calling it our high school seminars. They're going to be 12 days in August. And we're trying to provide an opportunity for students to kind of review the courses they had just finished. Just completed that they didn't fail, they passed, but they just want to kind of bolster skills to ready themselves, say, for the next. Class that would come in the sequence in math or on the IB level, the second year of IB, chem, bio and so forth. So that registration should open, I would say, no later in the beginning of next week. We're just finalizing some staffing. And just assessing the survey results to see what it is people are interested in. So let's see in the remediation side of summer programming. We also had set up the remote program for special education and our special education programs involve related services. And that's speech, educational services, occupational therapy, physical therapy. And then there are some students that actually attend a special class program. It was pretty much the students in the primary and intermediate RISE and Core programs that went to our programs. And that had all been set up remotely. Then a week ago, this past Friday, the governor did announce that. Special ed programs may or may be offered. In person. So of course, that was exciting on men levels to us. It's a little one of those things. It's a little easier said than done. But fortunately, we were able to with a little blade start, we will offer an in person special class program. On July 27. Not only for the students that are in our RISE and Core primary and intermediate programs that typically came to us. But also for older students that normally went to Camp Anchor and don't have that as a as an option this summer. So we've expanded our special class program. We applied to the state. We've given permission to do that. So we're really excited about that because it gives the children opportunity to, you know, just stay connected, have a continuity of learning. And then get them into the schoolhouse at the end of July. With that, I do want to reassure you that we're doing a ton of planning in terms of what that will entail. We've ordered most of the PPE at this point that we'll need during that time. We're setting up our guidelines for reentry, health checks. Sanitation, hygiene practices, social distancing, classroom procedures, separation of workspaces. Bathroom procedures, arrival and dismissal procedures. So there's a lot of planning that still has to be done. But this time period will allow us to do it. So I'm very, very grateful to. The staff, the teachers, administrators that helped set this up. It's it's really very exciting that we'll be able to do it. So that I think that brings you up to date.
That's amazing efforts. And again, you handed the same kind of crazy formula. That you had to check off all these boxes, even getting that curve ball last week. Again, a happy curve ball, but changing and being fluid was so important. And I think that's. A really great thing that you were able to put something in place to try to bring the students back together. I'm also very excited about the kindergarten readiness. I'm so happy you added that. I know we spoke about that a couple of meetings ago, how we were wondering what it would be like for those little ones to try to come back to some sort of normal in in September. And I'm really thrilled that you ended up adding that. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, that's the Tara Hackett Memorial Pre-K Readiness Classes. Brought that desire back to the to Keith and Chris. And I think Keith's wife, Ali, I could also teaches for us. They they came up with that idea and I thought that was fantastic.
It's awesome. I'm so grateful. Thank you for that. Questions from board members about the summer programs?
No, I would I would just say thank you so much, Noreen and your staff. We it's the same, I think we'd all say you just worked so hard on it and it has been a very difficult task. And I know parents really are happy to hear that students will be starting to come back into the building in some form. And we know the task that it takes to get there. So thank you. Thank you.
Can I just interrupt you for a second, Noreen? You may want to just one. Remember, we're going to do the kindergarten screening this summer as well as part of the summer program. So Noreen, you may want to take an opportunity that the last time in June, that we'll have an opportunity to speak to parents. Something they can anticipate hearing about during the summertime, but nevertheless, if you got two minutes to describe that as well.
Now, the kindergarten screening is so, so important that we gather our eyeballs on these babies before they come in. And that was delayed, of course, canceled in late April and early May. We thought we were going to do it as part of the pre K program. Those hopes were dashed. But we did figure out a way that we can do in person screening where staff, each of the principals has identified staff willing to come in. One safely, socially distanced, less children at a time. It would normally took two days to screen. It'll take us three, but we're kind of stretching out. We're we're going to get that done. We'd like very much to get it done. In the meanwhile, we did send out the early screening inventory to all parents and we now have those are coming in pretty. We turned them into digital format and they're coming in pretty fast now. So we'll have an idea about these children before they enter the schoolhouse. And they those dates are they're pretty much all in between August 10th and August 20th. We've identified that time period. We want to delay it as much as we can to make sure that we have the current data. About what's going on with the COVID-19 and hopefully the phases of operation. Will be have moved along so that we're able to bring people back with confidence and people and people will be comfortable about coming back.
Yeah. One of one of the more important pieces of this is that it is information that is gathered and then shared with the principals. And it will help them with their staff make the decisions about how children will be put together in classes rather than just kind of randomly placing them. In in kindergarten. So it's really going to be based upon some very real information. So we really want to encourage parents. If they can at all, to participate in this summer screening program.
Miss, after summer, Mr. Murphy, I have a question for that I've gotten from a lot of parents. Summer school is great. Who can go to summer school that will help them step back into school in September? I know that you've been working on graduation nonstop, but we will. I guess have a plan moving forward for September to try and pick up some slack of who's a little behind on classwork or or things like that.
Plans.
And will you discuss that maybe in August with the with the public or early September?
Plans, it'll be multiple plans because right now we're not afforded the luxury of having a plan. Yes, does it look, there's the logistical concerns of getting into September, the needs assessment. But then taking a look at where the kids are and where they where they have to be. I I I fear two things. I fear overcompensating. And piling on early on to try to catch up in three months and two weeks. And on the other end of the spectrum, and I don't think this is a big fear, oversimplifying it and just resuming business as normal. So somewhere in between the the two is where the truth rests. That not the least of which are talking with other external outside agencies to take a look at what their assessments are going to look like next year. Knowing that the continuum of learning has been disrupted. Both two year courses, one year courses. So all of that is being considered. But yes, that's going to be part of substantive discussions over July and August.
Okay, that was just a big concern about parents. John, I'm going to jump in for a second. I hope anyone, everyone doesn't mind, but that's going to happen in every building, at every grade level across every school. And that conversation is starting already. And we will hit the ground running for sure, starting July 1 with conversations around that. I know our new superintendent is going to want to have a conversation with the community about that. That'll be that, you know, just hearing that is a is will be a comfort for for a lot of parents in the community who are concerned about that. Right. Thank you.
A great point, Chris. It needs to be across the board and make sure every person at every level feels comfortable with that return to school. So thank you for working with us.
Dr. Johnson has been honest about this since the get go. So we will have it covered.
Perfect. I also saw a question rising about driver's ed. Does anybody have an answer for parents that are curious about driver's ed? And if they're being able to pick it back up or what happened with the program? I know obviously we're limited, but I just wanted to raise it since I did see it come across.
I don't want to misspeak. I know Ms. Rosetto has been dealing with the provider and that the students were credited for that experience for which they already had before school closure. I know that they were working on ways to credit that student and provide an opportunity for them to just finish the driver's ed class and move forward. But I don't want to misspeak and provide details that I don't have specifically.
The answer is trockless cause.
Uber.
An Uber, right.
Do any other board members have questions about anything for the summer programs?
It's we started enrollment, right, Noreen?
It started on Tuesday at nine AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Noreen. Great job with everything. I'm so happy we're able to offer all of these things to the students. So many choices. I love the enrichment ideas and I love that they could take à la carte, like you said. So you really were creative there too. Thank you so much. So, okay, Dr. Johnson, we're going to move on to the results of the annual election and budget vote. And if you don't mind, at first we'd like to, from on behalf of the board, we need to thank somebody very, very special in our community. Our MVP, Jackie Wong. We are just, we couldn't be more proud to have this woman on the staff of this school district. I I just have to sing her praises. We've never been through something like this before and we witnessed it live and in person. And this woman ran this process to precision as a well oiled machine, as if she's been doing it like this for 15 years. And I'm so impressed. The board members are so grateful, all of us, for everything you did. Thank you so much, Jackie, for everything. We just can't thank you enough. Thank you for your work.
You're very welcome. I just have to say I had a lot of support from members of the staff who really stepped up and helped from the beginning until until last night. So I'm I'm very happy to have a lot of, you know, people in our in our school district who who stepped up and helped.
It was it was a fantastic team. And again, it always starts with leadership and you led them to perfection. I can't believe you were able to get it done so quickly last night. That was unexpected. It was a nice surprise. But thank you to all the staff that worked on it. Robert, Ronnie, Lelo. Really appreciate everything everybody did for us. It was it was safe. It was clean. It was just, like I said, a well oiled machine. So thank you so much. Okay, Dr. John, pass it to you, but we had to thank her on behalf of the board.
Yeah, you you took the words out of my mouth. For somebody that works, you know, shoulder to shoulder with Jackie. Which we couldn't do for the last three months, but nevertheless. I was on the phone and she was in meetings with us every day. The level of detail that was involved in putting together the plans for getting this thing done and done effectively was staggering. The amount of time that she spent with the attorneys, making sure that all of the staff were well prepared. Was just absolutely extraordinary. And again, I'm going to join the chorus of thanks from the board. And say we are truly indebted to her. And I I wrote to her last night, said the consummate professional in organizing this, pulling it off without a without a hiccup. So we are very proud of what she was able to do and we thank her very much for the dedication that she has to her job. And the willingness to put in whatever time and effort there was that was necessary to get it done and done exceedingly well. So thank you, Jackie. Now, with that being said. I would like to extend my thanks to the community. I think I think one of the things that that occurred. When we began this odyssey and found out that we had 18,000 registered voters to whom we were going to have to send ballots. We were kind of sucking wind at that point in time and wondering, oh, my God, what does this mean? And we were anticipating that somewhere between eight and 10,000 ballots were going to be returned. There was a great deal of concern about doing this at a time when there was so much. Negativity in the world, particularly with everybody who had the shelter in place. The anxieties that that people had. And one of the things that was surprising to us, or is not surprising, but I think very, very helpful in understanding. How this community is committed to its educational system. Is that despite the fact that twice the number of votes turned up this year. In other words, we generally have about 3,000 people participating. This year we had over 6,000, closer closer to 6,500. And what we discovered was that the depth and the breadth of support. For our school district was was there. And in on unanticipated numbers. So many people had predicted that budgets would go down in large numbers. That did not happen. When you begin to take a look at what happened across Nassau County. We are not untypical of what occurred, although we are somewhat untypical with the large number of participants that we had in our voting. Many other school districts did not experience the same return that we did in Rockville Center. But despite that. We are deeply indebted to this community for recognizing the value of the investment that they make in the children. And in the staff and in the system and in their Board of Education. In putting together a product every year that we can be very proud of. And that in fact produces for this community what they expect us to do. And I think that that this was a resounding statement. I can't say I was totally surprised, but somewhat surprised. That it that we ended up with over 60% of those who did vote supporting our budget this year. So all I can do is say, thank you all in this community for your continuing support of this school district. I know even though I will not be here, that you have the commitment of every single person on the Board of Education. I know Christine Farazani, who will be joining the board, shares that very same commitment. And I am confident that with our new superintendent coming here on July the 1, having a number of conversations with him. He will use the resources wisely, along with the Board of Education, and make sure that the commitment to quality is continued. And all I can say is that on the behalf of all of those involved, thank you, thank you, thank you. So. And again, a note of congratulations. Tara, welcome back. You I, as I said to you yesterday, you can say goodbye to your family for the next three years. But thank you very much for your willingness to run for the board again and for your commitment to the children of Rockville Center. Christine Farazani, who many of us know well, comes to us as a PTA president at the middle school this past year. And a former president of the PTA Council. Well experienced, well knowledgeable, and I am sure she will be as committed as other members. Well experienced, well knowledgeable, and I am sure she will be as committed as other members of the board to continuing the work that this this wonderful board has done over the past few years. So again, congratulations to the two of you and thank you for the to the community for what they provided us last night.
Thank you. We have to echo the sentiments of thanks to the community for passing the budget. You know, really setting our children up so well for next year. We know we said from the beginning, we may not know exactly what it looks like, but we do know we have a commitment to educate all of our students. So we have a much better chance doing that with a past budget and we're so grateful. So thank you so much, taking the time to vote. Also wanted to, just one person I wanted to thank as well before, Mike Anderson and his team for the live streaming that they did. And I loved the pairing of the music of our children and from their concerts to it. It was it was great. So thank you as well there. Congratulations to Christine Farazani. And and also thank you to Greg Spalding and Joseph Hunsberger for running and putting yourselves out there for the community. That means so much to all of us. And thank you for doing that. And personally, I'm so grateful to be reelected. Thank you very much to everybody who showed me their support. And after being locked down with my family for the last three months, I'm sure they would not mind parting with me for the next year. Don't you worry about that, Dr. J. They're probably happy about it. So I'm I'm sure. And I would like to give the board members an opportunity to also thank the community. So I'm gonna do that first and then we would like to talk about somebody else that's very special to us as a board. So I'm gonna give Kelly Barry an opportunity if you'd like to just reach out to the community as well. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank the community for passing the budget. As Tara mentioned and Dr. Johnson mentioned, we're deeply grateful for your continued commitment and the investment in our future. Congratulations to Tara. You have been committed to working on behalf of all of our children over the course of the last three years. You have led us through this last year with poise and grace. And I'm really excited to continue our work together. Christine, welcome to the board and congratulations. I look forward to working together with you. And Joe and Greg, thank you also for running. Susan McNulty, in many ways, these last three years feel like they have flown by. But you have accomplished so much in that time. You have committed your life to working on behalf of all students and our community has been blessed by your service on this board for the last three years. We have benefited from your thoughtfulness, the way in which you examine all issues through multiple lenses. Your focus is always on what is best for the students and you lead with the perfect blend of the head and the heart. I've wanted to work with you in this capacity, but I am fortunate also to call you my friend. I look forward to all of the great things that are held for you in your future. Thank you so much for your service on this board.
Thank you, Kelly. Liz?
Thanks, Tara. I also want to thank the public. You know, every year we put up a budget and every year we bite our nails. And this year was particularly scary. And yet every year we turn around and say, we have an incredible, incredible population who supports our schools and supports our students. So thank you so much. And yes, congratulations, Tara. I I'm delighted to work with you for another year. And welcome to Christine and congratulations. And and again, thank you to Greg and oh, my God, it just went out of my head.
Joe.
Joe, thank you. I apologize. It just went out of my head. This is what happens. Susan, you are not here long enough. I think you should stay. With all respect to Christine, I just think you should stay. But thank you. From very early on, we could see you were a passionate advocate for our children. You brought an important dimension to our conversations. You will be missed. But while we will be losing you, we will also still have you. I know you'll take all that passion and all that dedication over to Nassau BOCES. Our children are still gonna be with you and you will serve them well there. And so you're you're never really leaving us. Thank you. I I'm so sorry that I can't just hug you and say thank you. But thank you for your humor and your thoughtfulness, for your vast knowledge and your intelligence, and mostly for your friendship. I will not say goodbye. I will say good luck and I I hope to see you around in person.
Thank you. John?
I'd like to thank the community for what they always do. They come to our support. This is their schools. It's all of our schools. And we, as a board, try to, you know, we try to do what the community asks us to do. And I'm grateful that people come come out to run for the board, too, because that's a way of showing their concern for the district and their passion to, you know. I believe everybody who ran had a passion to, you know, maybe make a change or do something or make it better or just be part of the the whole picture. It's it's just in districts where they can't get people to run. So, you know, although it becomes a challenge for those who are running, it's just good that the community wants to be involved in what we're doing. They've they've supported us over. This is my 11th. This will be my 11th year, I think. And they have supported us over the 11 years through the things that we have done. And they have helped us, you know, make adjustments and corrections. And it's just a good, good working relationship with the community. And their vote of confidence, you know, gives us the 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 way to go forward. So, you know, it's a great, great accomplishment. Congratulations to Tara. It was a tough year. We did a lot of things this year. And you led the board to all through all those things. So it was a tough one. There's no doubt about it. We probably are. The most important thing was the replacement of Dr. Johnson in his retirement. That was that was one. That's one of the most important things a Board of Education can do. And you were always there, always with more information that we that than I could ever imagine finding. You just had it all. So it was a great thing, a great accomplishment. I I reached out to Greg and Joe also. It was it was good to become part of the process. It was it was healthy for us all. And I just think that's a good place to go. I don't know if I'm forgetting anybody. Sue. It has been such a quick. It's like three years is you would think it's forever, but it goes like that, doesn't it? It just it just is so fast. And you 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 brought a dimension to the board that you you see things in a different way than all of us see with your background and, you know, and especially your expertise in special ed. It's just such a nice. You know, it's it was a nice balance to work with the board. You will go on to great. You are going on to great things where you're going. And you'll affect the lives of so many more special ed kids that 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 is so much. You know, I don't I want to don't want to diminish board responsibility, but that that'll that'll far exceed what you could do, you know. But you're gonna really have a great effect on the kids in Long Island and Rockville Center kids doing that. So I I congratulate you on that. It's a it's a major task. It's gonna be. And I'm sure you know that, you know, what you did on the board, it's gonna be twice as much where you're going. But it's I I think it's a great thing and you'll serve the special ed community in an unbelievable way. It's just your your passion and the fire about you is just is just a it'll just it'll just be a great, a great thing to happen. If I'm saying that right, but right. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to Christine for winning. And we I know that we all look forward to working with her and, you know, moving on. And we will because the Board of Education just keeps rolling along. We just, you know, just keep going. And that's that we have to do that for the kids of Rockville Center and and the community at large. So it's great. And, you know, I know that we it's it's just what we do. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I did. As a matter of fact, if you don't mind, I was gonna speak later. But now that you guys have been including Sue and then in your hallmark of remarks. You know, we as a administration know you guys for the most part as board members. And and what that means is that this is your commitment to the children in Rockville Center. This is your avocation. This is something that you choose to do outside of the world of work, outside of raising your family. What a lot of people don't realize is that Sue McNulty has another professional life, which is very closely aligned to the work that she has done on the Board of Education. She worked for many years in New York City. She took advantage of an opportunity to work as the principal of a building in BOCES where she excelled. And as a result of excelling at that particular position, the superintendent in the board, the BOCES board, took advantage of that and have elevated it to the position of Director of Special Education for all of Nassau County BOCES. So we have had the benefit of living with and working with Sue over the past three years and take advantage of the opportunities that we have just to tap into her her expertise, her commitment. But we also have to recognize that that others see what we see, which is the depth of commitment, the wonderful human being that resides behind that very pleasant and always smiling facade. And at the same time, we want to thank you, Sue, for taking the time out. I know the amount of time and effort that it takes to run a school over in BOCES. I know what it takes to be able to do the jobs outside, at least within our particular field, and how difficult it is to juggle those two particular areas of responsibility. And yet you've done so incredibly well. So I I would just want to join the chorus of those who thank you for your commitment to the children in Rockville Center. It's been a pleasure working with you in that capacity. You know, although I'm retiring Rockville Center, I'm not gonna disappear from the landscape. So I have a suspicion that we're gonna be in touch once again in my other life. But nevertheless, it is a pleasure to congratulate you on on all your successes at BOCES and to be one of many to thank you for the wonderful job that you've done as a board member over the last three years. So thank you so much.
I have to jump in then, Susan. I'll let you say your goodbyes as well. But we started this journey together. We had a crazy experience together. Three years ago, we came in together. We've been together from the beginning. And I just don't even know what it's like being on the board without you, truthfully. And I I'm sad that I'm gonna find that out really soon, but I've loved being with you every step of the way. What do you add to this table? So much. Your honesty, your gut. You're just a vast experience and education. You brought so much to the table. I I enjoy being with you so much. I respect you so much as a professional, as a mother, as a board member and as a friend. I really often wondered how you got everything done. I just I respect so much how you might have just a small team of people behind you, helping you get through all of this. It's impossible. One person could do so much. I always thought that about you and I always respect that about you. And I just want you to know, you've just shared such tremendous support. We've had some highs and lows being board members, but you've always been there. You've brought your integrity to every process we've had. You've just helped us navigate things and you've always kept our focus on education. And that's what it is that we do here at the school district. And nobody knew that better than you. So I just want to say thank you. I know our journey together will continue. It might be on the baseball field instead or socially. I know for sure. But really and truly, from the bottom of our hearts, we just can't thank you enough for everything you've done. The sky's the limit for you. I I just look forward to hearing about all the wonderful things you do. And I'm so proud of you for your accomplishments. Thank you for everything. I love you and I'm gonna miss you. That's all you.
All right. Well, thank you. Now that I'm crying and I don't even know what to say and I'm just overwhelmed by all of the remarks. And it has really been a journey being on the board three years, the past three years. Like you said, John, it went so quickly. And as you've all said, you've all become friends. And when you work together in this type of a situation, you do become very close because you really are together. You spend a lot of time. People don't realize that. We work. We have a lot of time and where you really bond different kind of relationships. And it's something that I will treasure forever. I really have grown so much over the past three years and learned so much from each one of you. You have all taught me different things that I will take with me as I continue in my own journey. I've learned from every board member. I've taken something from each of you, your honesty, your integrity, your passion, your humor. There were days when we would lose it, when it was getting late and we eating chocolate and all those good memories. I'll miss all of that. The administration, you taught me how to move on to become the executive director and how to move on in a professional way and what that looks like and how to work in my own field. So I thank you for that. The conversations I really treasure, I respect. I think that it's such a hard job and I'm really amazed by all of you, every single one of you, the administrators, the board members. You really give everything you have to this and you're so committed. And people don't always see that or always know that. But when it's just amazing, the amount of work that goes into all of this. So I just I'm overwhelmed at the moment and there's so much to say. I really just want to say thank you so much. And thank you to the community, just to say that about the about the budget vote. Thank you so much to the community. You've worked so hard and you really showed that you want this district to continue and to do the great things that we've always done to continue. Congratulations to Tara. You I think you've been incredible to work with for the past three years. You are so articulate and so strong and so fierce. And you will continue to lead the district and be on this board and make decisions. So thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to Christine. I think that you will continue to work with the board. It's it's hard work and I know you're committed and you'll be able to walk in and really put that forward. So congratulations to you. And thank you to Greg and Joe. I think it's really important that we do have people that want to run for the board because we really need that. And we are going to have that as we continue through. And it's important that we have community members that are invested and want to be on this Board of Education. And it's really been such a journey and such a incredible experience and something I will never forget. And I will take every piece of it with me as I move forward. So thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you so much. We love you. We're gonna miss you.
I love you. I'll miss you.
So of course, we know it's not only Susan's last meeting. We cannot believe we have come to the end of the road. Dr. Johnson, we really wanted to be with you in person and like Liz said, to put our arms around you and have your meeting, last meeting be together. But we couldn't do that. So we'd like to start off with a special send off that was created by some of those people who love you and know you the most. So I know Rob Lifter is on hand to help us show a special video that we created for you.
Oh, wow.
Hi, Dr. J. We wanted to make a special video for you to say thank you. And what better way than to ask those who you work the most closely with what they learned from you?
Over the 16 years I worked with Dr. Johnson, a phrase that he used most often was equal treatment of equals. When he was faced with a problem or situation that involved unions, a student's access to quality education, or a special needs student who required extra support to reach their greatest potential, Dr. Johnson would devise a solution that ensured an equitable resolution. His integrity was evident in all that he did for the Rockville Center community. Congratulations, Dr. J, as you take your next steps.
Hey, Dr. Johnson, congratulations on your retirement. Congratulations on your new state appointment effective July 1. And thank you for teaching me over the years not to solve a problem by creating another problem. God bless. Enjoy your grandchildren. Enjoy life. We'll see you.
What have I learned from working with Dr. Johnson the last 11 years? Well, I've learned the importance of having patience when dealing with a problem. I've learned the importance of two-way open communication and the value of respect.
Hi, everybody. Couple of years ago, Dr. J and I were chatting and I learned that he helped solve a crisis in state education while he was chatting with a guy while he was fixing something on his roof. Hold on a minute. Dr. J? Dr. J? Dr. J? Sue, he told me to meet him here. Robert, can we check our paperwork on this, please?
What have I learned from Dr. Johnson? I learned to never stop learning. Dr. J has always encouraged his staff to go to professional development, workshops, conferences, and even get their doctorate. He encouraged us to use that information to make the system better. He's never afraid of the difficult conversations and always always asks the best questions. I really appreciate all the knowledge he's passed on to me, the time he has given me. the time he has given me, and this amazing opportunity in Rockville Center. I will miss you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for everything you've done. Specifically, thank you for always including our special needs population. Thank you for always expecting the best from everyone. Good luck to you on your retirement.
I have learned so much from Dr. Jay this year in the short time that we have been together. Most importantly, Dr. Jay has taught me to always stay positive, be confident in myself, and to never give up on working hard to achieve my dreams. I thank Dr. Jay from the bottom of my heart for bringing me back home as principal in Rockville Center. And for that, I will be forever grateful. I wish Dr. Jay a healthy and happy retirement.
I've learned many important lessons from Dr. Johnson during my tenure in Rockville Center. The two things that stick out the most, though, are, one, when you believe in something, build it on a strong foundation. You will have the potential to last for years and impact the lives of so many. And secondly, is to always remember to put children first. When you do that, you ensure that your decisions are the right ones.
The most important lesson that I learned from Dr. Johnson over the last couple of years is that if you come up with a plan that benefits 90% of your students, then you didn't make a good enough plan. You have to make sure that we include everyone because no child should be left out of a good opportunity or a chance to learn and a chance to grow. And that's a lesson that I learned. It's as important today as it ever was, and it's something that I'll hold on to throughout my career.
In the last 20 years, Dr. Johnson has taught me many, many things. One of the things that he taught me was never solve a problem with a problem. Don't rush to judgment. Speak to all the constituents involved. Another thing he taught me was that the Amalfi Coast is one of the most beautiful places in the world and that I should go there. And I did. And I thank him for both of those tidbits. Thank you, Dr. Jay.
I've worked with Dr. Johnson for the past 21 years. And what I've learned from him is be yourself, do the right thing, and don't micromanage. Hire people that are great and let them do the job they do. I'm going to miss you.
So the question of tonight is, what have I learned from Dr. Johnson? I have learned so much, it's hard to put into a 15-second clip. I've learned not to solve a problem by making a problem. And I've learned to be true to myself and to understand that everyone has a right to have their voices heard. And I've learned even more than that that I can't explain, but I have to say thank you. I love you, and congratulations on your retirement.
Hi, Dr. Johnson. How are you? I've had the luxury of working with you for 23 years in a variety of capacities. I was a teacher, brand new. I was an IB coordinator. I was an assistant principal. And then I was a principal. And if I had to collate 23 years into 30 seconds and just tell you what you've taught me, it's that each step of the way, as I've moved forward, you taught me that each of the new positions wasn't a promotion, it was a change in service. As a result, I've approached my job in a different light because of your tutoring and mentorship. And when you look at it as a service opportunity rather than a job, the whole lens changes, as does your approach. So for that, after teaching me what service really means in the context of what we do, thanks doesn't even come close, but it's a start. Thanks for everything. Be well.
What I've learned from Dr. Jay is to never stop learning. Learning continues throughout our lives and grows through the interactions with the people that we meet. I've also been encouraged by Dr. Jay to become a lifelong runner. Keep on running, Dr. Jay. I will miss you terribly. Good luck.
One thing you taught me, Dr. Johnson, is how to problem solve, how to take a situation and analyze it from different ways. Thank you, and thank you for all that you've taught me. I wish you the best in your retirement. Good luck.
Dr. Johnson, I can't believe after 12 years, our time working together is coming to an end. I learned so much from you. One thing I do recall, when I asked, what's one major thing I learned from Dr. Jay? I wrote this black book 12 years ago. The first day I met you, you told me all means all. I wrote that down in this little black book, and I still keep it with me to this day. All means all. Thank you so much.
Dr. Johnson reminds us all the time, don't solve a problem with a problem. But if you do have a problem, it can easily be solved by strapping on your running shoes, going for a run, coming back the next day, and thinking it through together as a team. Thank you for always putting the children in the center of our focus. Thank you for this opportunity to serve them. Have a wonderful retirement.
Hi, Dr. Johnson. You always taught me to always take the side of the angels, and that no problem can be solved without a little piece of chocolate or a long run. Congratulations and best of luck in retirement.
Those are some pretty special words. On behalf of the Board of Education and all of those who came before us, thank you. Thank you, Rob, for helping us show our video. I don't know if we're back on our regular screen. There we go. So we, of course, don't know how to send you off from a virtual, you know, goodbye, but we're going to try our best. So thank you to everybody who participated in the video. I have to thank my husband. He put it together for us. We're going to utilize him for free service as long as we can. We have three more years of it. So we're going to use him as long as we can. But we have, all of us would like to say something on your behalf as well. So I'm going to ask the administrators if they'd like to go first. Anybody who would like to volunteer can jump in first if you'd like.
I'll jump in. So I've been in the district 20 years and 10 years in this position. And like most people that have worked together, spent 10 years together, you become somewhat like a married couple. I've spent more waking hours with Dr. Jay than I did my husband most weeks. And like both people who spend so much time together, we had to lean on one another in good times and in bad. So I do appreciate that very much. A bill from the bottom of my heart. I thank you for helping me through some of the shoulders of the last 10 years and really being excited about the high points as well. I really appreciate the opportunity you have given me to serve the children of Rockville Center schools. I admire your stamina, your sense of humor, your ability to stay the course. And your ability to stay the course and your willingness to stay the course means that you've insisted on and delivered to students a top-notch education, and you have insisted that they challenge themselves and one another. And it is my promise to you that your love of learning is contagious, and I caught the disease, and I am committed to keeping your legacy going.
Thank you, Norine. Robert?
I'll jump in. I've spent 20 years working with Dr. Johnson. It's been a great pleasure and a learning experience. We've seen many difficult challenges over the years, and Dr. Johnson has led us through all of them. He's been a mentor, a teacher, a friend. I'm sorry our time together here in Rockville Center is coming to an end, but I know there are other goals that he will be working towards, and he will be successful. Dr. Johnson, I wish you only the best. And congratulations on your retirement from RBC.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you very much, Dr. Jay. I really don't know, kind of speechless, which is rare. You've been kind of a father figure to me, always there when I needed you personally and professionally, and always someone I could go to about anything. And always knew that you would be there, could always find you, always accessible to us no matter when or where it was. And always put our kids, our students, first, which really was a great role model for us. And the old, you know, all means all, don't solve a problem with a problem. To see Fran there, that was very nice, equal treatment of equals. These are all things that mean so much. They become axioms or Johnsonisms, but they're really important to us and words to live by, without a doubt. And as Robert said, and Norine said, to see you go. I know you're going to be right down the block. I think some days you may make the wrong turn and come into our campus when you're heading down to Hempstead. And we will always welcome you. Come grab a cup of coffee, and we'll send you back over there if we have to. But thank you so much for all you've done for me personally and the students and staff in Rockville Center. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much. Yep.
Jackie, pros or no?
Sorry. Dr. Jay, I just want to thank you for everything. My student, my children who are graduated from the school district, they benefited from your knowledge, from your leadership. I'm so grateful for everything that you've done for the district and myself personally. I learned my job from you. I come to you with all sorts of questions all the time, constantly. And you've always, you know, been there to answer them. I just want to, you know, be able to see you one more time, give you a big hug because you just, I'll miss you terribly. I really will.
I'll miss you too, Jackie. Thank you very much.
I have to read, I'm sorry. Dr. Jay, the Rockville Center community will never be the same because of you. Over your years, you have lifted our students, some of our parents, and even some of our grandparents to a great level in education. You've touched so many lives in Rockville Center and made them all stronger and better for you being where you were. You are an anomaly as far as superintendents go because nobody stays the way you have stayed. You have given Rockville Center your whole career or just about your whole career. And we have been blessed to have you here. You should be so proud of what you've accomplished here in Rockville Center. And I wish you all the luck in the world of taking what you've done here and hopefully having that kind of effect in Hempstead schools. It has been a pleasure working with you for the past 10 years. It seems like a little bit, you've been here much longer, but, you know, 10 years, 10 years we've been working together. And, you know, you will be missed, and you have done an amazing thing for the Rockville Center community. Thank you very much for that. Good luck in, good luck in your future endeavor. I hope, I know you're going to jump into it both feet first, you know, and you will inevitably be successful in what you do there. Good luck with that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Dr. Johnson. Many years ago, when I was probably the age of our graduating seniors, somebody told me that if I was lucky, I would meet, I'd be able to count on one hand the number of people who would come into my life and change the person that I am. A person, you are the type of person that can make people into better versions of themselves. A person who challenges what your thoughts are, challenges what you believe your limitations are and the limitations of other children, other people. You are one who makes people better. You make us work harder. You make us believe. I don't just speak for myself. I believe there are many people who have walked the hallways of our district who believe you are one of those people. You have taught us to break down gates, to lift thousands of children. You have taught us the meaning of all means all, obviously, because everybody keeps saying it. When we look around at administrations across Long Island, through New York and beyond, your fingerprints, your teachings, and your beliefs are everywhere. Dr. Jay, we have not always agreed on everything. We have mostly always gotten along. You have always had our children in the forefront, and you have always made me better, and I thank you for that. I thank you for your decades of dedicated service, for your ability to challenge the status quo, and mostly for your friendship. I wish you luck. I wish you happiness. I will not say goodbye because I know I'll see you at convention.
Yes, you will. Thank you, Liz.
I'm going to jump over to Mr. Murphy. You were not on the screen earlier, so I'm just going to jump over to Mr. Murphy quickly, and we'll go back to Kelly.
Oh, sorry, I skipped the rope. So, Dr. Jay, you can just rest assured that two things. Number one, your PR for marathons won't be beaten, at least by me, anytime soon, or a member of the administration. So that record is intact. Nor am I ever even going to try. Still don't know how you did that. You know, when I started to reflect on, you know, I've known you for 23 years. I came in at halftime, you know. And that's, that's a small thing, but it's not. It's what you taught me is perspective, changing things. When you think things a long time and then you look at it through a different lens, it wasn't so long, you know. I only, I was only here for half, only here for half. And what a half it was. That type of lens, looking at things from a different, from a different light, walking somebody else's shoes for a couple of minutes before you make that decision. I don't know if you teach that or you live it, but either way, it's something I'm going to carry with me. So thanks, Dr. Jay.
Thank you, John. Kelly?
Dr. Johnson, in September, when you officially announced your retirement, you spoke about your love of family first and your love of learning second. You also spoke about your love for reading and for running. You said that you were looking forward to writing your last chapter and running your last mile here as superintendent in Rockville Center. I said at that time that I was looking forward to working alongside you as you did. I'm not sure anyone could have possibly scripted what this year would have turned out to be. But nonetheless, all throughout, you led us with a steady hand and a reassuring presence. In short, your work here has been monumental, and your influence far exceeds the boundaries of Rockville Center. It is clear to see that through it all, you remain a teacher at heart. You consistently teach those that work for you and with you through your analytical mindset and your tireless work ethic. It is quite evident that after family first, your love of teaching and learning is at the core of everything you do. I think about how many students who attended Rockville Center schools under your leadership and decided to stay here to raise their own families once they were grown. This is a pure reflection of your tireless determination to build a system where all students feel a sense of belonging. I've learned so much from you in my work on the board in just these past two years. I am grateful for having had this time with you and learned from you. I have had the ability to run this last mile of this race with you, but your race continues. I wish you all the best as you begin your next race and write your next chapter. Thank you for everything you have done for the children and staff of our community over the course of your career. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Beautiful words. Thank you.
Susan?
All right. Dr. Johnson, so what do we say? An icon, a legend. You're a true leader in education, not only in Rockville Center, but in New York State nationally. You have led so many initiatives that you are at the forefront of, that people didn't see yet. So you should be so proud of the accomplishments that you have had in the field of education. So many people follow you and are watching what you've put out and have developed programs on research and on going to a workshop that you've presented. So always remember the influence that you have had and you will continue to have as you continue on to your next journey. You have taught us so much working with you the last three years. We've agreed on things. We've disagreed on things. We're passionate. You, you listen. You're kind. You will argue a point when you need to, and we'll go right back with you. And these are moments that we'll always remember because they teach us lessons. And I've learned so much about how to have hard conversations, how to have difficult conversations, how to make difficult decisions. You do that every day, and you teach the people around you how to do that. And I think that that is so, so important. And that's something that everyone here will take away from working with you and having that opportunity. So I just want to say that you've been a mentor, that I've learned so much from you, and I know that you're going to continue to be successful. I have your number, and I plan to continue to use it. So you haven't heard from the last of me yet. Today is my last board meeting, but you will continue to hear from me. And I miss you, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Yes, we will. Okay.
Well, Dr. Jay, I know this is, like we said, not ideal last meeting, but 40 years of board meetings and 34 years of them as superintendent, I can't even imagine to start to do the math. But I know for me, just to be one blip on your timeline with my three years of service and my one year as president, I know I'm a very small piece of your history, but you're all of mine. And everything I've done, whether I'm a DTA, a parent, a board member, it's, it's been under your leadership, and I can't thank you enough for that. Though some could argue the last year felt more like a decade together. We've created quite a bond, you and I. We've navigated some, sometimes we didn't expect to do, ending in what we're ending in right now that we're not even in the same room to celebrate this. But we've been together through it all. We've found a way to get everything done that we've had to do, really create a strong relationship, have respect for each other, and come to decisions that benefited the children and do it with heart. Having been involved with looking for your, you know, replacement was a task I never imagined we would be doing. It was probably the most pressure situation this board could have ever been under to try to find somebody to fill your shoes. And I'm so proud of the gift that you've created of this district that we are able to turn over to Mr. Chang. I don't know that people realize what we're, what of a goldmine we're handing him, of what you've built here. And you've always done it with heart. You've always done it with the students as a focus. And all the parents, children, community, staff here are just so grateful to you. As a Board of Education, I couldn't have asked for a better leader to work with. And, and I really am going to miss you so much. Your impact is immeasurable. Your legacy is strong and true. And we will never forget anything that you've put into the district. On behalf of all of us, we send you our love and gratitude for everything you've done. Of course, our congratulations on your retirement. And if there was one way we could leave a parting gift that just kind of make sure that your name is longstanding in the district, we decided to name the Administration Building after you, and it will be the William H. Johnson Administration Building. It's your home. It's our home. It's the place that represents your leadership, your stability, your growth, and the family that you've created. It's not only a place you reported to and worked your magic in, but it's the home of all of your future leaders of this district. It's the hub for the staff, our families, our board. No matter what future leaders ever sit in that building, in that big chair, they will be honored to know that they're sitting in the very seat where you led the district, where you created the atmosphere of equity, where you represented all students, where you designed it as a sense of family, and where you made decisions that impacted the students of the past, the present, and the future. This building is the center and the heart of everything we do in the Rockville Center School District. And we couldn't be more honored to know that every person who walks through those doors, and there are many, will forever feel your influence, your everlasting presence, and your love for all the children in the community. So we're so proud to name that building in your honor. Robert's working on getting me beautiful rendering of letters to add to the, to the roof line of it. It will not be a small little sign. It will be a beautiful, large rendering, and it will forever be out of love and affection from this board and everyone that came before us for everything you've done for us. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. We're so proud of who you are and what you've done for us. We know you're not done. We can't wait to see what you do next. And we're going to miss you.
Well, that's very, very kind of you. Thank you very, very much. I, I don't think I deserve any of what you have done for me, but I, I did have a few things that I wanted to say. You know, I, I began here 40 years ago. It was actually my second career. I thought I was going to be into research and university professorship for all of my life. And then I discovered this job in Rockville Center where I had been a consultant and fell in love with the work. And I have been here now for 40 years. I was trying to figure out how many board meetings. It's somewhere around, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,100 board meetings in the 40 years that I have been here. Not that I'm counting, or that anybody should count, but this is the last. There, there are just two things I really wanted, wanted to, to say. I, I had thought about going through the litany of all the different things that have been accomplished during the years that I've been here. And, you know, who cares? You, we, we, you can't look back. You have to look forward. You have to build on what it is that you have. People don't remember. They don't see it. What they, what you really want to do is to take a look at what you have right now and understand that the foundation is there to create something new and wonderful and beautiful. And I, and I think that, that, and I must say, we, we have done that. The, it's so interesting, Liz, that one of the things that I was going to say tonight, you said, and you said very beautifully, and I really appreciate it because it gets to the heart of what I, what I have tried to do. And it is all about change. And there are two focuses, two folk, or two focal points about change. One is the individual, and the other is the system. And the beauty of being in the position that I've been in all of these years is that I've had the opportunity to touch the lives of so many, many different people in ways in which they have been able to look to me for some guidance or some assistance. And at the end of the day, both they and I are different and better. I cannot tell you how much I have appreciated the opportunity to work with the incredible talent pool that have walked into the Rockville Center schools. And because of them and because of me, I've become different and better. They became different, and I hope a little bit better. But the other thing is the, the system. Just like a human being, a system operates and has a life of its own. It is really reflective of the commitment that people have to how they view themselves, how they view their self as a part of what it is they do every day, the commitment that they make to the value systems that drive the underlying service that we are trying to provide. And at the end of the day, you have this, this ever-evolving system that, just like people, can become better and better as time goes on, as long as we are committed to do it. And I think that's one of the, the beauty of what I have been able to experience in the 40 years that I have been here, is that whether it is me or they, or the combination of we and they, we have truly made this system one which is a, an ever-evolving and ever-growing and ever-improving means by which we are able to provide an incredible opportunity to children who live here in Rockville Center and decide to come here as kindergarten children, spend 13 years with us, and I think emerge as ever-loving of learning as we love them and their learning opportunities. So that's one thing. That, that whole issue of change is, is what we are built as, I think, as both teachers and administrators. But the second is, and, and this is what, I, I, I don't know how to express it more deeply, except just to say it. It has really been an honor and a privilege to serve this community. We have grown together. I have watched this community evolve over time. We, as a system, have evolved over time. We are very different than we were when I first became superintendent in 1986. And at my very first opening remarks, I used the terminology "all means all." And every year since then, I have exact, made that, to some extent, a theme of every opening speech that I provide at the beginning of the school year. I am committed to all children. I think that one of the things that, that has made me so proud of being a part of this community is that it is not me. It is what I have been able to reflect. And I think that that term reflects with this community how they feel about the children that they want to raise in the Rockville Center public school system. So the fact that "all means all" and what it, what it has meant, and whether we use some of these aphorisms like equal treatment of equals and "never solve a problem with a problem," whether they're Johnsonisms or whatever they are, they have held some very, very, and been rooted in some really incredible values that have allowed us to grow and become better as human beings. So I, I, I guess I, I don't know how to thank all of you. I think each and every person that has spoken as part of that little video, all the members of this Board of Education, all of the people that have preceded you in the, in either the jobs that they have held in the school district or are members of the Board of Education, the honor and the privilege has been all mine. There are two things that have driven me. And I know we were talking about my family, my reading, actually, research, reading, and running. But my family has always been at the forefront of my life. But I think that if I had to leave you with two things, one, we are a learning institution. And to the extent that we, that we are a learning institution, one of the great things that it has and that I will carry with me into my retirement and forever is the appreciation of what I have experienced participating with a community of learners that is second to none. Whether it be John Murphy, or Chris, or Noreen, or Robert, every day that we come and we work together, it is a brand-new and ever-changing learning experience for all of us. And the last things that I just wanted to mention, and two things that, that, that are so much a part of what we do on a regular basis, love and hope. I, I know it doesn't really necessarily sound like it belongs in a public school or coming out of the mouth of a superintendent of schools. But what we are all about as an institution, whether we are talking about social, emotional learning or taking on the next challenge, we do it because we love the people that we are with. We want to make the place in which we are able to survive as human beings and to just become so much a part of one another's life, always a loving relationship. And at the end of the day, what we want to make sure is that our children leave us and that we, in every single experience that we have as a, as an opportunity within our system, have nothing short of hope that tomorrow is going to be better than it was today. And that is the heart of what I think we have, that I have learned this system is all about. It is what I have learned from the Boards of Education that I have worked on, including the one that I am working with right now, that together, we have figured out a way to take what we have, whatever it may be. And I've heard over and over again, people say, yes, we don't agree with one another on a regular basis. Yes, we have very strong ideas. But at the end of the day, tomorrow can be better than today. It is because we can hope with one another that we have all of the strength, the courage, and the love for one another that will take us to that pinnacle. And we will get there together. So again, I'm going to end where I started. All means all. I am committed to that for the rest of my career, even though I am retiring from the system. As you know, my career is not over. And I, and I truly hope that if anything I am remembered for within the school district, it is those three words, that "all means all." Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve all of you. Bye.
Thank you so much. I just never will forget your last superintendent conference day when you spoke and announced your retirement. And because we're on Zoom and we don't have people sitting in front of us that can watch for this, the other board members can. The roaring, you know, sound of your standing ovation from your staff that worked under you and under your leadership will forever stay with me. I will never forget it. I will never forget the words you said to them. And I'll never forget their reaction to just the applause and the appreciation. And so I'd love to represent them all and say that to you for them because I, I heard it, and I'll never forget it. But thank you on behalf of every single one of us, every parent, every child, every staff member, every administrator, and every board member. We just can't thank you enough. And that love and hope that you've given us all these years, it couldn't be more important than it is right now. So we're cheering you on in your next gig. And like Chris said, you're down the road. So we're going to maybe come spy on you and visit you once in a while.
Always welcome. Right.
We're interested to see how you're doing. So we hate to wrap up our last meeting with you, but we're going to move on to our very boring, you know, stuff that we have to take care of. But we'll send you off and say again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Yep.
I think we lost Mr. O'Shea. I just want to note for the record, maybe he's having a technical difficulty. I don't know if anybody heard from him, but we're going to try to get through our motions. So hopefully, we can get him back. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on June 3, 2020?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to accept the receipt of financial reports as listed?
No moves.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed, the warrant for May 16 to the 31st, 2020?
No moves.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to accept board actions A through Q plus an addendum?
No moves.
A second?
Second.